Ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon. Thank you for joining us. On behalf of Tata Wuchi East Asia Library, we really appreciate your support, especially on an busy workday and also the last weeks of finals and graduation. My name is Sam Wolford. I'm an experienced educator. I come to UW a lot to utilize this library. I'm also a co-president of Friends of Tata Wuchi East Asia Library. Now, let's welcome my co-president, Xiao Yan Wu, our community leader and pioneer, to say some words. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. First of all, I want to thank you so much for being here. Everyone of you are just such a good friend to me, particularly our new politician here and candidates and everybody here. My name is Xiao Yan Wu. I've been here for all my life. I was 21 when I came to this country. You know, for here about 54 years. I'm always very passionate about the community service and I love this country. You know what is the best about America? Because it is a melting spot and in every culture are being respected. That is the reason that I love my culture and also I love American culture. When I was involved in East Asian Library for many years, I am the one to start Friends of the East Asian Library. The reason is because I love the culture and I think that is why that we make America the best country in the world, aren't we? So today, I am so grateful to all your friends to be here because all of you are very here about the culture. I want the future generation what is coming to be. America is a melting spot and we really appreciate this country. And I want to say thank you so much for all of you to be here because all of you care about the culture. I want to thank you, Jesse Ten, the candidates, came well soon and thank you so much to be here to even do the demonstration with me. I'm so grateful. And then also our Navier, District Number 46 Senator, and he's always had a good heart and want to help the community. Janice Lee, and you are so grateful to be here. I know you are very busy, so I want you to be the first one to speak because I know you are busy and well, Jenny, you're such a great friend to me and I am so grateful that you can be here. I know a lot of people want to speak. I only want to have two. Oh, yeah, thank you so much to be here. I'm sorry. I'm so passionate about East Asian Library because this is the number 12 biggest library in the West Coast. It's being used more time than any of the libraries at the University of Washington. I love University of Washington. I need to make sure the library can be continued forever, even I'm not going to be in this world. I want to make sure it will be continued. That is, I have two missions to be honestly to get. Number one, stop throwing the books away. The book, yes, we can read them, but we should not just put it in the dumpster and not to give the evaluation before you can throw them away. Number two, I want transparency. That means any of the policies should be stronger, make the East Asian Library stronger and not to weaken it. We need staff to work in the Eastern Library, not to make only Dr. Sun the only person working here. So this is my mission. And you know, Friends of East Asian Library, will be here forever because we want to see our future generation can use this beautiful, great library and it will be accessible even we are gone. And thank you very much for being here. Thank you.
Thank you, Xiao Yan Wu, for such a heartfelt speech. You spoke really, really from my heart. And next, since our professors, they are very busy, they need to join another event. Let's have Professor Chen Luyu, Lü Chén, my dear admired professor from Chinese Linguistics Department, give her insight. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. I didn't know I'm supposed to give a speech here, but simply I want to share three stories with you. First of all, my name is Chen Luyu. I'm a professor of Chinese Language and Linguistics in the Department of Asian Languages and Literature. I teach regularly courses on Chinese linguistics and advanced level Chinese language here. Okay, so three stories to be put. It was a Saturday morning in May, I think, on the UW Admitted Student Day. I was here doing some work in my office and UW closes all its office buildings on weekends. I went out for a walk, but then I saw a mother and a daughter. This daughter was just admitted to UW. They were looking inside Gowan Hall, first floor. And I was like, excuse me, the building is closed at that time, right? Do you need to use bathroom? And they were like, no, no, but can we go into the library in this building? Oh, and then we started to talk because it turned out that this mother, who was also a graduate of the UW, spent a lot of time in this library when she was a student. And then her daughter was just admitted, you know, in 2023. And she wants to let her daughter know about this place that meant so much to her. That's my first story. My second story, well, not a story, but a regular practice that I do in my Chinese Linguistics class. As you know, we turn online for many things, right? Including for like looking for books, we go to eBooks, which I really don't like. But in my class, we regularly use materials in this library found among the stacks right here. I usually tell my students, go to this building basement in this stack, find this book. The reason is not because I want to waste your time to locate this book because you can also find an online version of this book. But the reason I want you to do it is because I want you to experience this rare opportunity of being among the stacks of books by yourself, uninterrupted, surrounded by knowledge. Because once you graduate from this university, you may never have such an opportunity or this tringle piece of time all to yourself. This is a rare opportunity. So that's why I send my students here and they do come, okay? And third story is also a regular practice. This library is so precious, a set of books that are intended for Chinese language learners. So before the library closed down for renovation, our students came here regularly on Fridays, sit behind those stacks over there and among themselves, okay? And with an instructor, they basically sit there and read a book that are curated for their needs at their level. So as we know, this library is primarily for researchers of Asian languages or history and literature and so on and so forth. But this library is also for those who want to become proficient in the language, who are future researchers in this field, right? And the library is doing a wonderful job in this regard. So that's why I strongly, I'm a strong supporter of the library too and I want to save the books for obvious reasons. And I really cannot think, I really can't understand why, you know, we have to have this meeting trying to save the library because to me, it's so obvious, right? But anyhow, I would like to stop here and save some time for other people. Thank you for listening and thank you for your support.
Thank you, Lü Chén. Professor Luyu gave such insightful story. Story telling is so powerful. And now, since I know Jenny Zhang is very busy, let's have Jenny Zhang, Beaufort City Councilwoman, to share, to say some words. Thank you.
Yes, well, thank you very much. I am just very honored to be here to support this effort because I believe that, you know, my father was born in China. I came to the States from Hong Kong. And I have actually spent 10 years at the University of Washington getting three different degrees. And here's what I can tell you is that having these kinds of spaces where we can learn together and feel and touch books online will never replace that. And I think the more that we think about all the things that are happening around the country to stop us from learning our history, it will be more and more important than ever that we have places like the Tata Wuchi East Asia Library to be able to have this community gathering place, to learn together, to be in community. And Xiao Yan, I might actually say that it is both the melting pot, but I might say the stir fry. Here's the thing with stir fry, right? We value all of the flavors inside the stir fry. And when I think about the ability to have these different libraries with their own character and architecture in the library, that will never be replaced by aggregating and consolidating, moving books into storage so that you can request it and it just shows up as a discreet piece. How do we ever build history and community and activate and celebrate together if we're going to be chunked into spaces where we don't have the space of belonging and learning and sharing? So thank you very much for inviting me to be here. This is absolutely worth saving and speaking up for and bringing in the students, the faculty, the community to make sure that not just the Asian library, but all the other libraries are preserved for generations to come. So thank you.
Thank you, Janice. I really love stir fry at her. I love it. So next, let's have our state senator from 31st District, Milian Thai, give a speech. And then we'll have, we have award senators from the state. You're so fortunate.
My name is Milian Thai. I'm a state representative, so I'm from the House, the state legislature. But more importantly, I'm an Asian woman. I am a Vietnamese refugee. The first refugee, I have the honor to elect herself in Washington State Legislature. And more importantly, I am a graduate from University of Washington. I graduated from University of Washington with a degree in pharmacy. But I am here because this is very important to preserve our culture and our culture is coming through knowledge. And I can share with you both from a perspective of somebody who left my country as a refugee. Somebody who left my country as a refugee, I don't get to carry with me books. I get to carry with me memories and knowledge. Where do memories and knowledge came from? Came from our reading. Yes, there is a verbal transfer of histories and stories, but it's also from that individual learning and that is extremely valuable for me. When I was a student here at University of Washington, I participate in an active members of the Asian Student Association. And working to preserve our cultures is critically important for us to understand our roots, to understand our root so that we can help others to understand us. That is how we build community together. So that is from my perspective. But I would also share another story that way later, when I was serving as a school board director in Beaufort School District, a parent came to me and asked me, can you please help my son? Something is very wrong with him. And I said, so can you tell me what's wrong with him? He does not want to see movies. He does not want to go to concert. All he wants is to read books. And particularly, he like to read books from Asian countries. And I asked the parent, I don't think anything wrong with him. Why do you think something is wrong with him? The parent say, but that doesn't guarantee him a well-paid job in the future. True story. And through the conversation, I eventually asked parents, this student was a high school student, to come to University of Washington and really use the library and the resources available for those who have that gift, the gift of wanted to know culture, the gift of wanted to know language through linguistic studies. Because as we know, our word become more and more less diverse because of the ideas that somehow certain language does not deserve to be preserved. And that is not true. Every culture, every language deserve that preservation deserve, understanding deserve knowledge because I would not be able to stand here without that deep knowledge and that deep transferring of caring and love of so many generations before me through my ancestor and through us. We can give that same gift to our future generation. So as I listen to the speaker before me, I have sent an email to my staff at the House to really be able to understand deeper simply because University of Washington is a gem, is a treasure for our state. And I'm looking forward to learn more from the community, from staff, from University of Washington leaders. And together, perhaps, we can find way to make sure that the culture, the language from East Asian country, China, Japan, Korea, be preserved for future generation. And thank you for including me in this meeting. Thank you.
And next, you know, we are so grateful to have so many supporters. We also have a tight schedule. Please, next, let's welcome our state senator Javier Valdez from 46th District.
Thank you and good afternoon. First, I want to say it's hard to follow someone like President Min Thai. I don't think our community in our state is real. No, I should be honest. We are so lucky and fortunate to have such a great leader, a real, a real, just a genuine person in our state legislature, that's Min Thai. She's also a little modest. She's also in leadership in the State House. She leads for us, for all communities of color, every day in and day out. And I thank you for the job that you do for us. So my name is Javier Valdez. I am the state senator from the 46th Legislative District. And my district, actually, the University of Washington is actually not the 46th and the 43rd. But if you live north of 45th Street, so just two blocks north, how many folks live north of 45th Street? Well, you all live in the 46th. So even though I don't represent, have, you know, campus proper, I guess, I do represent many students and faculty and employees who are here every day. I too am a proud Husky. It's, as I was got off the light rail, my air at the university stopped and walked over here and dawned on me that 35 years ago next week was when I graduated from the University of Washington. I was a business school major before it was called the Foxer School. And I too, you know, really treasure this university. For me, you know, I grew up in rural eastern Washington in Moles's Lake. I'm too, with first generation, studying grants from the farmers and laborers. And I'll be honest with you. When I came to the University of Washington over 30 years ago, you know, I didn't really know much of my cultural background. I mean, you know, when I was a kid, I mean, my parents made picture, I went to school, you know, stay out of trouble. But didn't really, I guess, understand like my roots, you know. And even though I was a business school major, every year, I took a course in ethnic studies. It was either economic studies, where I took many classes from Erasmo Gamba, Pachur Gamba, but also ethnic studies. So I could learn more about my background, my cultural history. But what I was always impressed about the University of Washington is that it embraces cultural diversity. It thrives on it. It talks about it. And you know, in all their publications that they do, they're marking, oh, you know, this and that. And so when I started to learn a little bit more what's going on here, in fact, to Xiao Wen, who invited me here, because I too am a little troubled. When we're, University of Washington, you know, one of the leaders of all of our public universities in the country, is demonstrating, I think, you know, efforts to, you know, close down cultural resources or limit them. You know, that, that really does trouble me. And that's not, that's not who we are, either again, as either, you know, UW students or alumni, as supporters, but also, of course, not, I think, Washington's effect of the premier public institution here in Washington State. And so I'm here to listen. I'm here to listen about what we, as state legislators, can do to find out what is more, what more is going on here. I know next week, there, we do have a meeting, myself, Representative Cindy Rehue from the 32nd District, Representative Thai, are now going to forward you the invite. But we do have a meeting a week from today, actually, with library officials who have made decisions here just to give us a little better explanation about what is going on and give us, I guess, their perspective. You know, we want to hear their side too. But I, but I know that, you know, the questions that myself and my colleagues are going to have is, why does there seem to be this effort, concentrated effort to limit cultural resources, cultural access to, again, limiting to what, this is not the expectation that we have here at the University of Washington. So we're going to find out more and advocate to find out what we can do, of course, to ensure that, as we heard from Xiao Wen, we want transparency. We want more efforts, of course, to ensure that books are not going to be just thrown in the dumpster. That is absolutely ridiculous, although I just heard what I heard today. And so we'll see what comes out of that and keep you all posted. And hopefully, we can come to a successful, you know, whatever that is and ensure, again, that we are doing what we can and ensure and reinforcing that this library is so important, not just to the community here, but again, to all of our communities throughout the UW, Seattle, Washington State. Because when, when you start looking at one, well, who's next and who's next? And that's not what we're about. So thank you for having me here today. I'm here to listen and keep up the good fight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for Senator Véndez. And next, let's have Dr. Yuan Zhong, Emeritus Cariter of East Asian Library from UChicago. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm very honored to be invited for this event. I have to say a few words about myself. My name is Yuan Zhong. I recently retired, two years ago retired from University of Chicago. Before retirement, I was the director of their East Asian Library. I served in University of Chicago for, I think, 20... 20 years, 28 years. I'm 20 years and I served as head of East Asian Library in North Minnesota for seven, almost eight years before University of Chicago. So I have worked with colleagues from University of Washington, University of Washington East Asian Library for many, many years. So I know, I heard about this, I would call it downgrade of East Asian Library. I'm very much concerned, not only concerned as a professional or as a librarian, but also now, after I retired, moved to Washington State since 2021. So also as a concerned Washington State citizen. So let me say why I think East Asian Library is very important. I can talk, keep talking for a very long time, but let me give you one example. So I have some connections with University of Washington, East Asian Studies and East Asian Library. In 2009, I was invited as an outsider or external evaluator to evaluate the University of Washington's East Asian collection because University of Washington's East Asian Studies received federal government funding, which called Title VI. You know, and that was actually created by US government after World War II. Because at that time, the US government suddenly, I wouldn't say suddenly, but finally quietized. You know, they need more scholars, students to learn other side of the world. So the Title VI money is basically to support areas. East Asian or Asian Studies, one of it. Because they also have other areas, South America, you know, Eastern European, many others. But so that is competition. So University of Washington's East Asian Studies programs applied and awarded for that federal grant, but it need to be evaluated. So and in that evaluation, it also including a part of library collection and service. So it's not only the teaching program, not only the research that the faculty and students, doctor, students are doing, but also the collection, the information, the scholarly resources that you were accumulating and also services you were able to provide. So we need to evaluate if you couldn't, you know, meet certain standard or if you couldn't, in other words, doing better than other competitors because there are many more like universities apply for that. University of Chicago fortunately, also one of the receiver for Title VI grant, you know, for East Asian Studies. So I came here, I would say, you know, the East Asian Library did great for University of Washington to continue receiving that federal grant, which support the University of Washington to continue teaching Chinese, Japanese and Korean cultural language and also politics, economic issues and also giving, you know, lectures like students have luck to know East Asian culture, to know about East Asian history, you know, and to be able to better communicate and to be able to better, you know, maybe go that part of the world into, for whatever reason in his or her career. So I think that's critical for East Asian Library remain strong. Not only remain strong as a research action because that is support the faculty and students do what they do, which is learning, research and teaching. But also increasingly, I think, you know, particularly in University of Washington, that is kind of different from University of Chicago. This is a state university. So you're also obligated to serve the state citizen because you receive money, the university receives money from the state. I'm not saying University of Chicago doesn't receive any money, but at least, at least it's not by, you know, you can't take for granted. You still have to apply something, you know, some relation. But state universities are part of the, you know, state support education system. Like just the senator mentioned, the University of Washington is a term. Indeed, it's a term in Washington State for higher education and serve a citizens a lot. So I think that for that reason, and increasingly, we see more Asian American population. We see about more, not necessarily have any Asian, you know, heritage, but they are interested in Asian culture, in Asian, you know, economics, business, whatever. in Asian culture, in Asian, you know, economics, business, whatever, that bring them to study. So we need to keep a good collection, we need to keep knowledgeable librarians to serve, you know, we need to also, to preserve the East Asian collections, you know, as, as a strong unit to continue pursue this, I would say, one of the university's mission, which is, you know, teaching and, and, and education. So and also, I would say, you know, University of Washington, for past, you know, some years, also provide leadership in East Asian librarianship. In, I think in twenty oh-eight, they actually organized a Chinese Studies Library Summer Workshop for a couple of weeks. I was fortunate, again, was invited as one of the instructors to teach in that summer program, but actually that training many, many new librarians in not only the US, but also Canada, in entire North America. So I think the leadership that the University of Washington East Asian Library provide for the fashion may be not fully appreciated or fully realized by the administration. So I very much concerned about the future of the East Asian Collection, and I think we will do all what we can to prevent it to be downgraded.
Thank you so much, Professor, for your valuable experience and insight, because we are absolutely on the same page. And next, let's have Kim Wilson, UW Uchi East Asia Libraries Executive Board member, to share and to say some words. Thank you so much for your support and joining us for the demonstration we did, you know, acquire a goal. Thank you so much. Also, he's also running for Seattle City Council.
That's right. Thank you so much for having me. This one works. That's great. And I graduated from here, I closed down that engineering library many weekends, they have very limited hours, so they're always kicking me out. Twenty-seven years ago, I graduated with my master's degree here, and I really loved hearing the stories, especially about my daughter. She was just like that. She's such a good soccer player. She always brought a book to soccer, and her coach was, put the book away, Jim, put the book away. So I have that girl as well, and she's a civil engineer, just like me, very successful. But what I'm here about, what I'm so happy to be a friend of and supporting of this library, is just the history that we all feel. And people will tell you, oh, you have that online, right? Don't worry about that. That's, that's online. And I appreciate those access, that quick access to things. It's very different. That, that should make you even more appreciate the value, the rarity of what you have now created. There's been a whole lifetime of assets to create these books, and these books are our history. They are our culture, they are our value. We need to keep that. And so someone talked about this already, and this is also why I'm running. It's about common sense. You build this wonderful library, this great asset, you, you support your state, and you have one of the best libraries in the state, in all this whole region of the West Coast. So why, why would you downgrade? Why do you have one staff? Why do you have, the name now is so famous because she helped with her husband to make sure this would be here for all of us and for the future? So common sense tells you, why are you taking that apart? But even now, I'm running for District Four, because common sense, we saw even two days ago, the council that saw the state laws, are we going to enforce our state laws here in the city of Seattle? Five people said no. Four people said yes. Is, is that what it comes to? Do we have to fight over common sense to one injury to people to continue in the street? And now here entering a value to all our community, the history, the culture, something you built robust already, just about maintaining it. I have in my even campaign, support for my campaign, his girlfriend has a dorm room across from it, and they see all these heartbound books just thrown in the trash. It's not, it's not pretend, this is real. Real volumes. Wait, wait a second, maybe someone can answer. Why, why do you throw it away? You can't give it to someone? There's a process. But we can't give it to someone. But at the same time, you heard, seven years ago, we knew this was a challenge coming up. The librarian for the other studies, the same they knew this was happening. So why is seven years the timeframe? It's the same for our city council that I am running for. So many years. Is this brand new that we have homeless challenges? Is this brand new that we have safety problems in our great city? No, it's not brand new. We need, we need good people. We need to do these good things that we're seeing today, to bring back common sense, make sure that we're all, we're all here. And, you know, stand with all of us, be a friend and supporter of this. With the right kind of leadership, we can make difference. We, we had some great leaders here that stood up to at least look into it. And so I would ask that, just like me, become friends, continue to support, show up and do things that are valuable to all of us in our community. So thank you for having us.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Very much. Next, let's have Professor Hai Cheng Wang from Department of Art History.
It's, it's quite sad that we have together here to defend the importance of libraries. I thought it's self-evident, evident as like music, everybody music. My first book is about writing, so I didn't write it, even so, it's, it's about books. I can't imagine life without books, without the physical presence of books. And for the past thousand years, paper has a very good track record. I'm sure many of you have that painful experience of losing all your photos or files in one click. Papers, they're safer, actually. So I can only use my own experience to tell you how important to have a magnificent library like this. I teach art and archaeology, and that means I have to deal with a lot of pictures. And we have a lot of picture books. We call them elephant folios. They're all in the basement of this library. I spend almost every, when we open, when it was open normally, the, this library is my default destination after my launch. I would go to the basement and browse through all the picture books over and over, because those accidental discoveries are really, are really the stimulants for, for, for all sorts of papers that I write. And whenever I have a graduate student coming in on their first week, in their first week, I, I wouldn't give them a campus tour, but I insist, I would insist on giving them a tour of this library. I tell them which call number designates which area, which is Chinese history, which is archaeology, and so on and so forth. Holding the, would become like me, to know, to know the library really well, and spend your time. After all, how many students can, I mean, how many, how many years can a student stay on campus? Four, six, five, seven, at most? Once you leave this, this university, you won't see a bigger library, like, like, a big library like this anymore. And this is your only chance. I remember in my days, when I was looking for graduate school, there are only two, I mean, there are three considerations. Money aside, it's a good advisor, that mean, that you know by reputation, by their writings. And then the other is a good library. When I first came, I went to Princeton for my graduate school, and that's where I first discovered that when American libraries said my holding is five million books, they really mean five million different books. While, while at Bada, when I did my master's studies, Bada Library said we have five million volumes, but every volume would have, every book would have ten copies. There's, there's a real difference. You can see all the books, I mean, I got to see all the books, I didn't know their existence in China. So, so I am really, it's really sad that we have to, to come here, to, to let the administration know how important a, a, a physical library is. Its staff, its experienced staff. I just had a, had a graduate student who's interested in, in early Jesuit writings and, and art making in China, in Lady Pure, China. But I'm not an expert in that areas, so I, I had to direct her, direct her to our former subject library in Chapman, who's now working for the Library Congress, who gave him really valuable information. But if he were here, I mean, it would make my, my students' life much, much easier. So I hope we can all work together to save this great library. Thank you.
Everybody pay attention to this view. I mean, we used to have a lot of activities, a lot of activities and a lot of active in here, but now we have one person working, Dr. Sun, that's it. And we have no, hardly any activities, and you can see the differences. So next. Next, let's have Professor Liu Liberman, Professor of Sociology, Chair of East Asians Center, to give speech. Thank you.
Very few public universities have an institution like the Tali Uchi East Asian Library. This library is a jewel and a crown of the University of Washington. I think we all know that we wouldn't be here today. This library didn't happen overnight. It's an accumulation of investments over a century by faculty, administrators, donors, community members, and library staff, in their wisdom and in their foresight. Our East Asian faculty and students depend on TEAL for our research. TEAL is not just a repository of rare books and manuscripts, although it is that. TEAL staff enable our research by finding and obtaining rare collections and documents that we need for research. This is a function that can't be outsourced to other libraries or other parts of the university libraries. As our faculty researchers know, and this is quite ironic, this library has materials that are hard to find even in libraries in Asia. TEAL is not merely a collection of books, or a beautiful building, or an endowment, or a system of data retrieval. It consists of many intangibles, including a network of knowledgeable users, expert staff, a relation with other libraries, a, a, a great reputation, and a traditional degree of autonomy within the larger university system. And I should add, a community of supporters that truly appreciates what we have here. These intangibles are what make TEAL the great institution that it is, and it's these intangibles that are under threat. Now, thank you very much, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you so much. We have so many professors from all over the country here today to support us. Thank you so much for being here to share your unique insights and experience. Next, let's have Dr. Shu Yun, Shu Yun Jiang, Emeritus Professor and Chinese Studies Librarian from University of Illinois, Champagne Urbana. Thank you.
Well, it's glad and it's also sad to be here, actually. As a library work in a similar library, just like UW, I think, being here, I hope I can bring some library perspective. So you mentioned the 2008, we had an East Asian Library workshop, and I am one of the students at that time. And I remember we visited the library buildings, and we mentioned the, the first building, the library building, you ever hear, that the president said, that's the chapel of the university, that's the center of the university. That means, that can also be said, the, the library to the university, and also the East Asian Library to the East Asian community, I think. So from a similar size as a library, we had a similar experience, actually. University of Illinois is one of the largest collection, so we have a space issue. We also have reorganization through the years, but I think the focus is how we put our user as the, our most important aspect, how we reorganize our institution to better serve our users. That's our goal. So I was so, how to say, the, I looked around the information about this recent UW reorganization, and one thing mentioned is that the train is to centralization or to reorganize. But we had East Asian organization, this Council on East Asian Library, we had that forty years or fifteen years, and there's no one East Asian library without subject library, without Japanese library, without Korean Studies Library. That's no, I mean, probably around the world, you cannot find a library that's like that. And you reduce or downgrade a, a, a library, which to a service point, to a check out book service point, that's not to put the library as a chapel. Not, not, that's definitely not. So we, in the University of Illinois, we had a reorganization, we threw almost two years of discussion. We had a town hall meeting with students, with faculty, to actually figure out how we wanted to do better. And I remember at one, one winter night, it was snowing, a feet high, and we had a town hall meeting, East Asian faculty, students all showed up. No one was missed, even undergrad student. They come to support it, to tell us how they want our collection to be, how they want our library to be. And I don't know if the UW reorganization had that process. I hope they do, because that's how you can make a better decision, what you really want your library to be. And also, as I mentioned, Illinois University is the largest, one of the largest collection. We have many, fourteen billion collection. We have special, a space issue, and we have three stage of high-density storage to solve this problem. And we also have a very well-established process to how we send what works to our storage. We don't just close our eyes, dump the books in the, in the garbage can, that's not. We are throw away our knowledge, we are throw away our history. I think as a focus of UW East Asian Collection has very, how to say, real book collections. And I remember there's several books published about this collection, and that's only very small part of it. There's a lot of still now. And those books themselves, not only they are the knowledge, also they self is a historical publication. And those books themselves, not only they are the knowledge, also they self is a historical publication. The papers, the bindings, all those things, you don't just throw them away. Because some of them are could be a target or material for research. So I hope that UW will have better, or I don't want to say better, but a very, how to say, well-thought decision to make, to how to actually make East Asian Library TEAL a better library to serve its users. Thank you.
Thank you so much for sharing your, as your library's perspective. Also, I'm so impressed, you're the largest collection at your library. Next, let's welcome Professor Yu, Professor Yu from UW Language Department. Professor Yu, Li Ping Yu. Yu Li Ping老师, Yu Li Ping教授. We have known each other for years, coming to UW to enjoy the workshops and everything. Thank you so much.
Oh, thank you. I didn't know that I need to speak in front of a crowd. I think, I am Li Ping, and everybody call me Yu Lao Shi here. And I have been teaching Chinese ever since 2004, so almost 20 years, and I'm still enjoying it. I think, everybody has the frustrating experience after the pandemic, when we want to call, say, your doctor or your insurance company, you press one, you press two, you press three, and you can never get your problem solved. So here, same experience. I think, by consolidating the library to increase the efficiency, I just don't know how it will happen. So by cutting 75% of the staff here, how can we enjoy the level of service we used to have? As a teacher, I use this library a lot. And from the personal level, I really, I truly enjoy using this library. One of the reasons I choose this university 20 years ago is simply because of the library. Uh, not simply, mainly because. Because Asian Language and Literature, the Department of Asian Language and Literature and the East Asian Library is just a part of a big family. You have me, I have you. So we, we have each other, so we got to have this. And from the departmental level, in the past few years, we had a very good relationship with the library. I'm not very good, I'm very good at teaching. I enjoy teaching, but I'm very bad in using the fancy stuff, looking for books and stuff. So I always enjoy using the expertise of the librarian, who can locate my book very quickly and efficiently. So I truly enjoy that. And also, from the departmental level, in the past few years, the library has subscribed, subscribed online reading program called Chairman Bao. So it's a leveled reading. So the librarian Yu Lao Shi helped us, our students, to register this into the system. There are over 40 students from all levels using this program. And we have integrated the reading program into all levels of our teaching. So we truly, truly enjoy this library, and it's very important for us to have it. So that's why I'm here. I really don't see a sense how this can be efficiently served us by cutting off stuff. I see the other way around, by adding stuff, then we can have good service. Thank you.
Let's also talk, introduce our best friend, Jesse Ten. He's running for the Pro Commissioner. He's always very passionate about education. Okay, 2 minutes, thank you.
Everybody got 5 minutes, I got 2. I talk fast, hi guys. I'm Jesse Ten, I'm running for Port of Seattle Commissioner. But the point I'm trying to make today is very simple. I mean, most people sitting here today, supporting this wonderful library, that is totally, no need to press a button. The only thing sad about that, I don't see a lot of people from University of Washington, decision makers sitting in the room, to hear about what a wonderful dreams we heard. We talk about a cultural value, historical value, linguistic value. But I want to add couple more comments on it in a different angle. I came from a banking background, and went to school here, a graduate program called Pacific Coast Banking School, 30 years ago. I travel around all over Asia and run businesses. And time after time, there's so many students went to school here, go back to their own home country. Years later, they become a businessperson, they do business with Seattle, Washington State, and United States. It become a major factors of commercial value tied with the education. So I believe universities, if you're about just from the expenses standpoint, budget issue, they should really think about the commercial value the education can lead to, beneficial to, to this region. Port of Seattle has $1 billion revenue coming in, majority of revenue confirmation. So why are we ignoring that? Okay, that's one of my personal opinion. Second is, my kids were born here. My oldest married a girl from India, and my younger one married a girl from Thailand. I have an international family, and I love them. Now think about that. All of us with Asian background, or in Asia, understanding that Asians is not one type of people. There's so many different Asians from all over the world with different backgrounds. We create a value here to bring people together, we educate people. We become like Shenzhe, a melting pot. It's a place we bring all the culture together. And despite, we can travel around the world for all the countries, but it's so, you need to be able to come to the campus. If you have one location to bring the value together, and share that value, and share their knowledge and education, by doing so, we are better Asian American period. So I'm going to keep it short, those are my comment. Thank you very much. Again, I'm excited, we should expand this program, not just thought to have the same, right? Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. Actually, we're both Indian New Castle, I'm so proud of Jesse. And next, let's have Liu Chen, City Council Member from City of Edmonds. Thank you, Liu Chen, for coming out of your busy schedule.
Thank you, Xiaoyan. Xiaoyan Chen, I appreciate you organize this event, and really appreciate everybody here, I know how busy you are, so am I. I prepare a speech that will probably last for 20 minutes. I'm gonna throw it away and just speak from my memory, because I only have 2 minutes. So I am the very first generation immigrant came to this country, and couldn't be more proud. We have a wonderful community here. I'm holding this minor. When I came to the United States, I went to Iowa. And very lucky that I become Iowa Hawkeyes. Once a Hawkeye, always a Hawkeye, that's the same. And very, very proud of that educational opportunity that I get from Iowa. One thing that I'm a little jealous though, is at Iowa, we don't have a magnificent Eastern Library like this one. So when I learn about the resources that's available here, I fall in love. The feeling is kind of like, when I came to Seattle, first time I went to Lynch 99 Market. Let me give a little bit background information. In Iowa, when I had one nice meal, a shocking experience, I had to wake up 4 o'clock in the morning, drove from Iowa City, Iowa to Chicago. I see a professor from Illinois here. When I have that experience, but when I came to Seattle, when I went into Lynch Market, I look up, I was like, "Oh, this is heaven. I can have everything I want." And this library is like that and much more. Because I can trace my roots, I can trace my history, all the way back. And not only China, but the entire Asian culture. Like Jesse Ten mentioned, Asian culture is very different. So let me go back to my son now. Today, I'm very, I'm being a little bit selfish here, I'm thinking about my next generations. My son was born here in 2011, just passed her 12 years old birthday. And when he grow up, I want him to become a husky. I want him to be able to come here and learn about the history, the cultures, that we hold so dear and near to all of us, especially to myself. So I want that opportunity to be able to continue to, not only to my son, but to the future generations and the generations that follows. And not only to the descendants of Chinese Americans, but to the future generations of all people. Because in this world, we are interconnected. All cultures are in one. We are interconnected, we are interconnected. And I wanted this opportunity to tell you about a new organization that we just formed, the Asian Service Center in Snohomis County. CEO is Robo Ha back there. I don't want to take up too much time, but if you like to learn how we all can work together to serve not only this library, but our community, our culture, I love to connect. Thank you so much.
I have to introduce my friend, his name is called John Chu, and we both from Taiwan. We're from a different party, but we're the best friend. And you know, so, we're here to talk about culture, we're not talking about politics. That's why, I want him to talk about a few thing about his opinion about East Asian Library. John, come on.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for the introduction of Xiaoyan. Xiaoyan is my good friend for a long time. Although you think he's Chinese, but I'm Taiwanese. We're still good friend. But I come to Seattle in 1975, go to UW to study a master's degree in civil engineering. So Engineering Library becoming a very important place that I go also visit. Second important thing that I found is East Asian Libraries. I come here often, at the time, in Taiwan, under the dictatorship of Chiang Kai-shek. It's lots of things we cannot talk. But when I come to here, I got introduced, go to downstairs, look at so many books. Those books, I'm not supposed to be able to look if I'm in Taiwan. So I learned a lot about Taiwan's history. And that strengthened me becoming a Taiwanese. I call myself Taiwanese-American. So after I graduate, I get married, and my 3 children graduate from University of Washington. So UW is a very dear place, in my thought. So in 2000, Yan Man Wu, I think most of you probably know her, retired from East Asian Library, and he set up a Taiwan Endowment Fund, try to help buy the books for the East Asian Library. So I think that's a very good idea, so I joined right away. And I donate every year. The first year, I donated $10,000, which is not much to a lot of big guy, but it's a lot for me. So I found out also, Director Shen Zijia is a very nice person. We talk about a lot of programs. And she pioneered a program called Interview with Asian People, Chinese People, Taiwanese People, live in Seattle, which is kind of old, and they have a lot of memory, they want to keep the memory as a record to store in University of Washington. I think that's another very good idea. So I joined as a volunteer, and I volunteer to interview about 10, 15 people from Taiwan. And we speak Taiwanese, so those old people, they don't speak that much of English, some of them. So we can record their voice, and they tell their story, including Wu Yemei's story. Now she talk very slow, so I interviewed her 3 times, for 3 hours. But anyway, I heard recently that the library going to be reduced, going to be, have less service, and that make me very nervous. If this really happen, maybe in the future, I don't have to donate money to East Asian Library anymore. Which I don't want to think so, I want it to be stored here. So I've come here to say my feeling about East Asian Library. Hope everybody can understand the importance of divergence. And thank you for everybody coming in. Hopefully, you can join the activity to save the library. Thank you.
Next, we have Principal from the Classical Scholar, Lin Chen, give us some words. Thank you. And then we have Seattle Chance Radio Station leader Su Xiaoyan.
Hi, everybody. My name is Lin. So I guess, the good news is I'm one of the last speakers, and we can get on to questions, and I'm sure you are eager to ask them. And the bad news for me...
Yeah, and we'll be in session, please, you know, stay here, and you have opportunities to ask questions, so we're going to give you answers. Thank you.
Well, the bad news for me is, I think everyone before me has stolen my speech. So I'm gonna have to borrow, well, since also leaving. He has a, he has a little speech maybe I can borrow. But I really wanna, first of all, find out from our crowd, how many people has first time into this library? Okay, it's actually quite a few. Thank you so much for coming. I am also the first time user coming to a library. And, but I'm sure, the reason we're all here, it's because something personally connects to a library like this. And I thought I'd just share a really quick story of my personal experience in a space like this, how it has shaped my future and my past, and hopefully into the next generations. So I was born in China, I was, I grew up in the Cultural Revolution. And in our school, all the cultural, history, religion, philosophy was banned from our education. So I knew very little about my route, just attending school. And I guess the only thing I do remember is, if you want to be praised, if you glorify in any way, then you almost always have to relate yourself to either the party, or as a contributor, or as a member. And that was all I remembered, that was the only thing that was kind of established in our education. So I really didn't know too much about China, or how I am related to China. And so my, my family immigrated here when I was in middle school. I just had eye opener. I just thought, the people live in the United States are so luxury. I mean, you can have a chicken for the whole family for dinner, that was unheard of where I came from. And the freedom of be able to read anything, learn anything, and be anyone you can be. It was something always down on me, as someone I want to do, something I want to do, and someone I want to be. And then as I go to college, I developed a very intense interest in architecture. So I attended Architecture School, and we have to learn about architecture history, how architecture form come about. And that's a time I remember being able to know the culture. And that's a time I remember being able to know the culture and actually shapes the house that you live in, the school you attend, and how intimately you can relate each different buildings to the cultural history, philosophy, its background. And I was fascinated to learn all these different kind of architecture to the history timeline, to all the Western civilization, other civilizations, and how that shaped in the famous architecture that we know today. So then, in my last year of graduate school, I decided to revisit my roots, something that I have always liked to learn when I was a kid. So I picked Chinese Traditional Courtyard as my project. And I wanted to understand how that evolved since 3,000 years ago and how it can be utilized in the future and still be feasible for our modern use. So that was my thesis. And luckily, when I went to school, we had a space just like this. And it was my home from home. I was like a hungry child. I would go to this library every day. It was all about Eastern culture and history. I could pick any book I wanted to and just intuitively, you know, open it and be connected to a paragraph or a diagram or a phrase from the historical giants and scholars that it can immediately empower me to do what I wanted to do, to finish my thesis, but really to shape me as a person and what I do now. So that is, that was a personal experience, I think, I want every one of our child to have as well, and the later generations. Because to be in a physical environment like this, I call it learning habitat, because I physically and emotionally feel that when I'm in that space, I was embraced by knowledge by something that I was so eager to retract, is something that I was lacking from my childhood. And it's something that is so important for me to understand and learn in order to enrich myself and my life. So ultimately, the whole year I spent in Asian library like this, and I learned as much as I could of what had ultimately helped me to finish my thesis, but really start, I didn't know at the time, but I feel like it really shaped my way of how I wanted to incorporate classic learning for our youth. Because I know how much it benefited me to be as a person. And just in addition to the manifestations of what cultures are from different part of the world, our language, custom, holidays, but really how the history of lessons that we have learned that will empower us to be a better person, all these great lessons. So I wanted to implement that onto the later generation. And after years of professional career, we raised a family, and I started to stay home with my kids. And I started volunteer in a Taiwanese-Chinese school as a teacher. And I taught Chinese literature, poetry, Confucius, philosophy to little kids from three. We raised them from three, and now they're almost in high school. But they would always come up and share with us some of the things we made them remember, because all the little kids have incredible memories, right? So we made them remember all these very famous phrases from either poetry or literature. It might seem abstract at the time, but as they grow up, they can really relate their life experience with what they have learned and start to come together. And that is what's so rewarding for me to watch, to see this little seedlings start to blossom. And it's all about virtues that I think is really gonna serve them in their lifetime and to shape their personal characters to build a good society that we live in today. So that is an aspect I see from the cultural aspect of history, how that can shapes a person and how important it is to have our later generation to be embraced by that. And again, there's one way that we could download everything virtually, you know, even if that's possible. It can never, it can never replace a space like this, a learning habitat that you will constantly intuitively, tentatively be able to just reach out to books, just reach out to knowledge that immediately be absorbed and become part of you, and then makes, make you grow. And I can't emphasize enough, it just, when I walk into this library, all that memory comes back to me, and it becomes, I get so emotional, because that library really shaped my life and completed my life from what I was lacking and helped me build my life into the future. I can only relate the same thing for every one of you. And I hope that we could work and fight really hard to preserve and make it better of what it is for us, for ourselves, but mostly for our children. Thank you.
Well, next is I'd like to introduce Mr. Yan, the creator of the Chinese radio station. I always admire him for his courage to have a Chinese radio station in United States and Seattle. He has such a courage. Okay, Xiaoyan, two minutes, please. After that, we're gonna answer a question, and we'll be finished at four o'clock. Thank you so much.
Thank you. My name is Xiaoyan Su. I graduated from UW, so I'm a husky. I'm really proud of that. So I graduated from the Foster School of Business with an MBA in 2012. And during the study, I never came here. But the Chinese radio, the idea was only related in the classroom at UW. And after that, I came here several times. And TIO, East Asian Library is a part of my treasury memory about Chinese radio. Especially, we interviewed the very famous writer, Mr. Bai Xianyong, and I still remember, you know, it's already, uh, directed by Dr. Shen. And I'm very saddened to learn that the new head of the library of UW want to downgrade this East Asian Library. It's not, for me, as a CEO of Chinese radio and a media person, what I able to do is to get our voice heard. Like, we can do a program on our radio, and we want to get our voice heard by the public or to the future elected officer, officials. Or perhaps, especially more importantly for this library, we want to get our voice heard by the leaders of the university. And perhaps, we can work together brainstorming to find out a solution. Perhaps we can negotiate with the leader of the library or university. Perhaps, like Mr. John, I interviewed him several years ago on the radio, and perhaps, people like him, many of us can donate and to hire another person to work together with Dr. Shen or something like that. We can negotiate with the university and find out a solution to keep this very valuable library. We need to make our voice, especially how valuable, how important of this library to the community, to the, not only the students and the teachers, professors in this university, but also the public, general public in the whole Washington state. So thank you, and let's act, and keep this library alive and get better. Thank you so much.
Now, so answering question right now. So we need to have the two professor. Can you please on the stage, and then we can, any concern, any question that you need to answer about East Asian Library? Please stand up.
Professor Yuan Zhou and Professor...
Zhou Yuan.
Oh, yeah, Zhou Yuan,教授, the中文名字.
Zhou Yuan and Su Su Yung. Yeah,教授. Okay. And please feel free to answer any, have any question concerning East Asian Library, okay? And they can answer, and we want to know the future, how it's going to be. And it will just last for about until four o'clock. And then we hope that everybody answer any concern that you have.
Can I ask a question? So I wonder if any of our UW administrators are invited or they are present at this town hall meeting? Yeah, because I heard so many great speeches. I hope they can hear these too. It's so important for them to know the reasons why the public are supporting our TIO.
We invite everybody to come. This is a free speech, and that's the best about America, right? We can all speak and speak our mind, that's why. We all live in the United States. And so we invite them. So some of them are maybe written, a letter written by the gentleman, so then they cannot come, they afraid to lose the job. And some of them, they do come, and then we see the good result. And so we just want to solve the problem. And so that's why we have this meeting. Have our concern, we are not trying to be confrontational, but we just need to, the answer. We want to save our library, that is our goal.
Another question. So is there like a catalog online which would compare and contrast between various collections for the libraries here versus other libraries? Thank you.
I hope I understand your question correctly. So you're wondering, you're wondering, you're wondering if there is a catalog that can allow users to compare a collection of UW with other libraries' collection? I would say yes, you know, but they are not only one, they are many kinds. First of all, I think, you know, for Northwest states, you must have, I don't know the name, but I'm sure there is one. And for the country, I mean, actually internationally, there is something called OCLC catalog. If, I didn't check the UW's libraries catalog, but like in, you know, Chicago, they call this World Cat, the World catalog. So World Cat. You actually can search any book you would like to find out where, which library has the copy, you know. In the United States, in Washington State, somewhere near Seattle, or you would say, I would like to say, if there's a copy in London, if there's a copy in Taiwan, Taipei, or if there's a copy in, you know, some other country. Not every country a member of OCLC, but a lot of them are. So that is, I believe there should be available a UW's libraries catalog, you know, as a choice. When you look at something, if it not called World Cat, I think it must called World Cat. Yeah, 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 they wouldn't make some other name. Because for professionals, we call it OCLC. But for users, we understand that it's World Cat.
And I think if you search for a particular title, sometimes it tells... Sometimes it's tell you how many copies of this book, and if there's only one copy from, and which library has that copy. And I think another place, maybe Honey Trust, is also a good place too for out of copyrighted books that you can see as what they use as the base copy. That also tells, sorry. Thank you.
And there is a member in the audience who's not very comfortable using English. So is it okay to speak Mandarin?
Yes.
I think I can answer this question. I think two times already, I have requests to see him, but he never replied except replied by letters. When you reply by letters, he's not very sincere. He did not answer the question. For one thing, he said he's trying to straighten up the East Asian library, but in fact, that he take away all the librarian away from the East Asian library. We have nobody working here, and so we cut off the 75% of our staff. And then also, he told not to speak out, and he throw the books without consulting with any of the librarian that have been here for all their life. And that is the reason it caused for me or my colleague, my friend, or my friend that you are here, to encourage me to speak out. Because that's the best way to try to defeat, to try to solve this problem. Is I try to speak to him and ask him to be transparent. And why is he doing this and write to me another way? And this is not very sincere, that's a problem.
Please speak in Mandarin.
Yes.
I forget what you just said.
This is, to me, is not a very professional decision. 而且我觉得说，as a public institution, there should be documentation that are available, how they made the decision. And I think when this, when you say this is a train, why this is based on the training, then you should show what you have, what research you have done, show that this isn't the... And as from East Asian Council, the data shows actually, well, the data shows no such trains actually. The data shows actually, well, the data shows no such trains actually.
我问一下这位馆长，就是 Uh, I want to ask this professor. He was, he is the director of the University of Chicago East Asian Library. So how many staff in University of Chicago East Asian Library? And do you think only one staff here is able to run the TIO, UW East Asian Library?
Yeah, for University of Chicago Library, when I was there, I know, I retired two years ago. That we have six professionals, so that, and we have five supporting staff. Then we have almost ten students. But the students are part-time. Ten, sometimes twelve, sometimes eight. Because depends, students are busy and their each semester, their schedules are very... Sometimes they can work small time, sometimes they couldn't. Because after all, their far most, their purpose to be in the university is to study, to get educated, get a degree. So certainly understand. And also, they working at the library is partially support their perspective. So I would say that. And to answer your next question, I think it's absurd to think about this great library can be run by one person. This is just, I mean, this is really absurd. I think this great library need to be strengthened rather than weakened. Need to be upgraded rather than damaged. You know, it's for the benefit of University of Washington's East Asian study programs, for the benefit of Asian Americans and also international students, even just, you know, students who do not have any heritage in Asia, but is interested in Asia. For all of this, it should be strengthened for the collection, you know, and also for the service. So I think one person certainly is absurd.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm from the Epoch Times. I have a question for Dr. Xu and Director Tan, and probably for Xiaoyan as well. You know, since there's no effective communication between the community and the library, what's your next step? What is the best solution? Thank you.
I think Friends of East Asian Library is gonna be here to stay. This is a long time coming because we're not gonna go away until we make sure the East Asian Library will be here to stay for the future generation. Not for me, I'm, you know, I don't have school anymore, I'm too old. But I think for our future generation, we need to spread the words of the culture, of our East Asian culture. And yet here is a very important library. You know, it's not just a library, but it's a research center. We need to preserve. We need to, coming down to our future generation, we need to protect. And that's why I'm here. I'm not here to make money, but I'm here to preserve our culture. So our next step would be continue for us to have this paper to sign and support East Asian Library. We need to support. And then we will talk to the legislature. We will form a committee called Friends of East Asian Library. And then we will make sure for the future generation, we still have East Asian Library. And for our, you know, our kids, our kids and other kids. So it is, that's our next mission and our goal, to make sure that we preserve East Asian Library.
So please leave your contact information if you haven't when you came. So we will keep you update. And you will be receiving updates from us. Thank you.
Yeah, you guys are all friends of East Asian Library because I'm sure you are here because you support this action. So before you leave, make sure you sign and support East Asian Library. And give to your friends, your brother, your sister, your mother, anybody that you know, please. And then also, the politicians today that stay here, like Karen Wilson, Jesse Ten, please be sure you support them. And because without them, we have no voice. We have to be united and speak the same language to save our city, our school, our community. And that's very, very important. Thank you.
Also, right now, we have about 4,000 signatures. Please keep forwarding the message. And if you haven't, just sign, just a manner of click. And then just put your name and email. And nothing else you need to do. Please, we, our goal is at least 1K. And then next goal, 2K, 3K. So we will be keep on going, we won't stop. And please remember, TIO, save TIO. It takes a village. Thank you so much for coming. Have a wonderful afternoon. Thank you.
Any questions anymore? Okay, well, we have a couple more question.
So I just wonder, besides signing the petition, is there anything that the public can do to help supporting TIO? Like me, I already signed the petition, but I wonder if I should go and email all the administrators at UW? Is that the next thing that we can do?
Yes.
Okay, great.
We need, right now, we have 4,000 signature? 4,000 signature, but we need 10,000, okay? Then we're gonna speak to the city council, the legislature, and then we want, we are not gonna stop until we preserve East Asian Library, okay?
Yeah, also, by the way, I'm running for Newcastle City Council. I really want to lift up our voice and to be, to see because of representation.